All right, it is seven o'clock on the nose. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. We will observe our moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Members of council have received the minutes from the previous meeting of ten seventeen as well as eleven seven. If there are no additions or corrections, then entertain a motion that we approve those minutes as presented.
So move.
Motion by Jack, is there a second? Saying my Rob, all those in favor, say the file by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries. I don't see it. Hold on. I have it. Scroll away. While I'm looking for that, let's move down to public comment. Is there anyone here who's not on the agenda who wishes to address council? Jerry Light? Where's my sheet?
Just sorry for being late. I've just came out of a barbecue bash meeting. And just kind of wanted to mention one of the things that we had just approved, which I think will be great. We want to attract obviously more people to town. So we have committed to giving hourly prize drawings from Thursday through Saturday evening every hour. There'll be two prizes, actually, one for children, one for adults. And we're not talking about gift baskets and things. We're talking about trips and cash and things like that. So we think that'll be a good drawing. Everyone that comes will be able to come to our headquarters and get a free ticket. Or yeah, free ticket and a hand stamp. If they want to buy additional tickets, if for instance, if there's something they really, really want, they'll be like a dollar. Very reasonable. So we thought that would bring some extra people into town, hopefully, that are looking for really good things. And we've got some good things we'll be announcing, but we thought we'd let that know.
Now you say that's an, say that again, an hourly prize?
Hourly prize. Every hour during the event, we'll give away two prizes, one for children and everyone that comes in will get a ticket and one for adults.
From Thursday?
From Thursday evening. I mean, we open at four to eight, so we'll probably start the first drawings about five. And then Saturday, Friday and Saturday all day.
Okay, all right, great.
So we hope we'll have some good prizes for the kids and adults and hopefully that'll bring more families to town and have them stay longer. So they're eating food and looking at crafters and enjoying town. So I wanted to let you know.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I found the list. We have the oath of office for probationary police officer Christopher Dale Spotlow. City police is taking applications and we have a recruitment poster that was posted on our social media earlier today. We have the Charles Gibson Library Director's Report for October. We have the mayor's Veterans' Day speech from last Monday. Proclamation for the Great American Smokeout Tobacco Awareness and Education. And the Stoker Youth Center gym floor replacement notice of award and agreement and notice to proceed. Those are your correspondence and information for the evening. Report of cat and dog activities in the Upstate County Commission, that's for October. And then certified returns of the general election from eleven five. That did not include any elected officials, but it did include our city library. That levy was renewed, so we appreciate the citizens of Buchanan supporting the library. That is just an inside-city limit levy, and it only affects the Charles Gibson Library here on Main Street. It does not have anything to do with the Tenerton Library or the rest of Upstate County. So, thank you, sir. I should have asked for this. I didn't. So we did open public comment. Is there anybody else who wishes to address council who's not listed already on the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public comment period? Motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Randy, all those in favor, say the file by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries. Down the recognition of guests, we have Don Nester and Dr. Rob Ruff. Good evening, gentlemen.
Rob wants to go first. He said he'd set me up.
And you agreed to that?
He meant every word of it. He gonna set you up.
I had him for classes. It was, I don't know that I would have agreed with that.
I should have talked to you about that before.
Good evening, Dr. Ruff.
Thank you for hearing us. Yesterday, I was driving down Main Street when I saw a yellow school bus dropping students off at Stoker. They were literally running to the door. And that showed that enthusiasm on that beautiful day yesterday. Because they were going to a place that we've had for decades in Upstate County, a place, a safe place to learn and to play. We were hoping that in the future, we would see a second door, part of the Stoker addition. But that did not happen when the council took the vote to stop pursuing the grant for the multipurpose room. The action appeared to some as more than just kicking the can down the road. It appeared like kicking the can in a blind alley. And it raised concerns. What makes it disappointing is that we thought, some of us thought, we were on the 20-yard line. Land had been purchased, buildings across the street had been removed. Title searches by Step Toen Johnson had been completed. What makes this frustrating is that we apparently were stopped by red tape and the combination that the city had to deal with shifting regulations and higher costs. Government regulators apparently wanted a $20,000 survey and a $40,000 extra survey. Those are such of the regulations that would be presented as obstacles for our effort. While I was at Wesleyan, I received three major grants for history teachers in West Virginia. Each one of them close to a million dollars. I understand the work and the diligence needed for any kind of grant application. And I applaud the council for following that avenue of revenue. But I want to say that I have two requests. One is to keep Stoker on the agenda. And second, to be open to explore options that will make the good of Stoker better for the kids in the community. Don will elaborate on the request for a study committee from the committee to support the future of Stoker. Excuse my emotion, but Don and I have been in this for decades, looking at this, seeing a little thermometer rise up and all the contributions. And you have to realize, we have four hun, almost a half a million dollars was donated by this community in order to do that. And now it's canceled. Don and I have been together since Mrs. Stoker's will came out. And what she did in that will, either she or her lawyer, is she said, "If you all can't find a local government to support and maintain this youth center, I'm gonna take all my money and go up to Wesleyan and give it to Wesleyan College." So I was in that uncomfortable position of telling my president that I was actively working, Don and I, to make sure we would find a government that would support us so we could use the money for its intended purpose, which was for Stoker to use center. It was a smart incentive in order to get action on the local level. But now we sit there and asking what the future is. And I only know this, we are one of few towns in the state of West Virginia that have a youth center. Situated in the middle of the, anchored by the hospital and anchored by the college. In the middle stands a testimony of our community to the youth. And we hope that we can continue that, and I will now turn it over to Don. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ruff. One thing I do want to clarify, we were not seeking a grant. We were seeking financing.
Financing.
Yeah, there were no grant opportunities through the USDA for recreation. We were seeking financing.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Didn't set me up too bad. I think he did. He did a great job. It's been good having Rob as a partner. I know when we first did the decision to accept the money, the community did, the county had the option. Does surveys and of all the students in the county, Rob's class at Wesleyan, did a survey of students in every grade in the county. And some of the answers got back where someone just wanted a safe place to go. They wanted someplace that they felt welcome, that they were not threatened, and that's what we've tried to do. So I think it's been, it's been a long time working on, but it's worked out well. And what I appreciate the time to speak to you tonight, and this is Rob mentioned. I along with many people, I think including the council, we're very supportive of what Stoker has done and here in the community. And what he mentioned about with the impact here in the community. Everyone who comes to Buchanan, and they see a lot of things about Buchanan they like. But when they go to the youth center, the question we have, whether you're from Clarksville or Morgantown or Charleston, is how do you get all the kids here? And it's really, it's really a great testimony to what we've been able to do here. What I wanted to do tonight, though, was just kind of give you my thoughts on the decision of the council here a couple weeks ago. And I was surprised at the decision that was made. Not surprised by the difficulty of raising money. I know that's been, that's been an issue we've talked about. Not surprised about the cost probably going up. I talked to Michael Mills just the week before. Talking to him about what are the options out there? What about STEM centers? And what can you do? And trying to search for things. We had talked about in the Stoker Youth Center meeting last month, but only without any decision to abandon this building plan. I understand, though, that that's the process there. And I think if, as I went back through this, the process, I come back to news reports in the past. And you had like 2016, we're gonna relaunch a capital campaign. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, there was a meeting of board of education. That's when they were still trying to raise their funds for a new high school. And talked to them, representing Stoker, about it's a way we all be working together. Because if you're building a building, we're building a building, we're interested in the futures of all our children in the system, we all work together. Unfortunately, what the voters did was they said, "We're not gonna build a new high school." But at that time, we were trying to work together. We went as 2022, tried to get community input for the building. Formular plans were adopted later in 2022. 2023, we started the, did the vote to go ahead and go out for the four million dollar commitment or maximum commitment from the city. The, we've had, at the end of November of 2023, it was a decision to just go back to quarterly meetings for the Stoker Youth Center because we're building a building. We didn't feel, there was a feeling that we didn't need to be that involved. Then in January of '24, we made plans to go back to bare minimum because we just, we felt it was something that we had cut back as what we were doing. And then unfortunately, two weeks ago, abandoned plans for building. I think that's, that's the process. And it has taken a lot of time and commitment by the council, by the staff in the city. I think by everyone in the community. It's taken a lot of time. And as Rob mentioned, we raised $440,000 roughly to go ahead and commit to that, to that building project. So there's been a lot of activity going on there. And so I went back and I thought in, where do we go from here? And I've thought a lot about this for a long time, but especially in the last couple weeks. So where do we go from here now? Because we're serving the youth of our county and of our city. So you kind of go back and you look at the Board of Education just released, there are 3,389 students in Upstate County schools this year. Three, thirty-three hundred and eighty-nine. That's down 186 from last year. So it's a decrease in students, which is not uncommon in the state of Upstate County. But in our case, it's reduction in kids. We have 269 kids in homeschool, 223 kids doing virtual. We have another 121 in the Hope Scholarship where they get some reimbursement funds. So we've lost some kids from the system that are doing something outside the school system itself. And hopefully they'll get into quality education, but I'm sure it's inconsistent, just like it is within the system. We've had some kids who have gone to other communities for school. Some people left the community. So we have a situation with those 3,389 kids that are in the system now that we know are here in the county, plus the other 400, almost 500 kids that are virtually or are homeschooling to look for. So when I look at those kids and the possibility, I think, I looked at what Stoker does, and Stoker's more than recreation. Stoker has a lot of programs in Stoker. You have the after-school program, what Rob mentioned, where your kids get off the bus. A lot of those kids have nowhere else to go until their parents or grandparents come home. This is a safe place for them to go. We have tutoring there for them. You have activities that they can get involved in. We have some, we try to control them and make them safer in time period. And you do have a Stoker, you have recreation involved, basketball, drill team, but you have the tutoring, the safe place. We have pottery, you have all kinds of activities in Stoker that I think is more than just recreation. And it is hard to raise money for recreation. Mary, you mentioned at the last meeting. If you look at the possibility of raising money for recreation that's gone down here and for STEM or something like that, it's much greater. We realize that. And so when I look back at this situation here, is where do we go now? If you look at from the student standpoint, I think it's great that kids, and it may not even be 20% of kids that are really competitive in sports. My kids were like that, you know, but if you look at the number of kids in the county who, first of all, can't afford to do that, may have parents that can, you know, that have the time and the, take the effort to get their kids involved in things. Some kids are not, are not disgeared to be in competitive sports, whatever it might be. So I think you have that out there, but my thought would be probably 80% of the kids in our county, at least 3,389 kids, probably are not going to be involved in that type of activity. They'll be involved in activities, but it's not going to be competitive because that just doesn't fit for them. And so what do you do with the other 80%? Still trying to reach out to those 20%, but the other 8% that don't have the opportunities that the other, the other 20% does. And when you look at their needs out there, it's something that they, they need an opportunity out there. At Stoker, we've documented there's, within an average month, you may have 10,000 to 12,000 hours of kids involved in activities at Stoker. So I think there's a place that they go. When you get into high school and middle school, it drops off significantly. We do really well with grade school, middle school, high school just drops off. But that's where the need is because that's where they're preparing for their futures. I think with the situation we've had here in Upstate County with the, with the school system, with the takeover, I think with the control out of Charleston, you have a lot of people that are trying to make this thing happen. You have some good things going on, but it's a challenge out there for any one education, but especially with that here in the county. So from the standpoint of where we go in this, I think recreation is important, physical activity is important, but there's other needs. And I've talked to the superintendent of schools and said, you know, for the kids out there, what do they need out there? And trying to figure out where do we go with Stoker? And it's more of a future building thing that may not be athletically. Athletic, hopefully they stay physically fit so they don't end up with issues like we have as we get older. But hopefully they do that. And so she understands that and the training that they need for that. A potential future, I think, is in two areas. I think one could be a career building opportunity. And I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas that I have and I'm absolutely open to any suggestion anyone has. Anyone in this, in this room or outside. Because I think we owe it to our kids. But if you think about a career building, look at Fred Everly. Fred Everly is extremely successful. If you, I talked to the director, Rebecca Byers-Call, and their programs are totally filled. They have no openings for any kids in those programs. So that's something that's working there. Maybe it's some career building through a Stoker relationship with the county somehow, with the Board of Education, with the community that could try to build on that to make that opportunity available for folks who are career oriented. You know, trades or something like that. I think that's an opportunity. I think also, you've talked about at the last meeting, STEM items. If you look at the STEM research area out there and opportunities to do science, math, technology, architecture, whatever it might be in that area. We, there's a need for that. There's substitutes that need that opportunity that don't have the ability to go elsewhere to get it. And if that's, that's something within our school system, then we might be able to partner with Wesleyan. We have Wesleyan just down the street, as Rob mentioned, that you have the skills down there. They have their honors program in the summertime. We have the folks who teach us science or math, whatever, can work with students. We could offer that opportunity through a facility, through Stoker, whatever you call it, the facility, for those kids who want to go that other route that may be out there that for some reason are not choosing to do that somewhere else. And that could be working with the professors at Wesleyan to somehow supplement the classes, to maybe have their students who may be interning for them to come in and help these STEM classes. And I've done some research on STEM, and hopefully you folks and everyone else has done. But STEM is a lot of times just a facility where you bring in the opportunity. You can get grants for that. There's funding out there for that. Where all of a sudden you may have, have a certain task that you want to bring to the kids. And then you could get these, these kits that, whether it's electricity or somehow you do a science experiment that's already been tested, that you could then have someone come in with the knowledge to be able to come in with the knowledge to be able to present those to the kids, that expands their, their perspective to, to reach potential. So you could, you'd have that as a separate opportunity out there, again, with coordination with Wesleyan, with the school system, we have to do that, and, but also reach out to those needs. The, my request to the City Council is, first of all, to focus on the options that are out there for all kids in the county. And, and if they, hopefully they'll take advantage of that, but it's going to take some, some, some work. We've always, already done a lot of work, but it's going to continue to take work, because it's for the kids. And so these kids will reach their potential, whatever that is, whatever their potential is, because sometimes that's not out there easy for them to see. We have $440,000, I don't want to give it away or have people take it away. I think people could come back and say, well, if you're not going to build a building, give it back to me. Who knows where it goes? I think we, we want to do this, this for the kids that's already there. What I would suggest is that City Council appoint a group, in addition to the Starker Board. Appoint a group that will go out there and, and meet and talk about these options that are out there. Whether it's a facility, there's been some discussion, how much can you do with the facilities that are now? Are there some rooms that could be utilized differently? Are there some rooms in the community that are available for that? So, so go out and, and address things like that. Work on a relationship with Wesleyan, whoever may be, be able to be involved in the skills aspect in, in the STEM area, to be working with, with Fred Everly, and what's successful, what's working there, what's making that work? And how do we, how do we adapt that to our situations here? And, and just thinking about that, I think we have been very aggressive and innovative, and as Rob mentioned, people look at Buchanan and see what we're doing here. It's, it's a great situation. You, you have people drive down Main Street, you go, your storefronts are filled, you know, how does that happen? I think there's so many things that we've done here, and, but I would suggest that you appoint a group, including Starker Board, have them organized, and instead just being out there on a list. My concern when I, I read from the last council meeting was that there may be the, the direction to say, well, we took care of that. Now let's move on to other stuff, because you guys have a lot of, you guys and Pam, sorry Pam, that will call you guys. But you folks have a lot of things, a lot of things to deal with. But I didn't want this to just go, well, that just went down the list. Because I don't think it is on anyone's list out there, but it, you have all these other things to take care of. But have this group come back to the council every month, have their responsibility to come back and report saying, this is what we've done. So you don't just have a group out there that, that just, just is committed, but they don't do anything. So many times, we, we have folks who are all kind of guilty, we're committed, but we just don't get around to it out there. So I think have, have a group to come back on a monthly basis, report. I think, whether it's focus on the trades, on STEM, facilities, whatever it might be. I think there's, there's a lot of, a lot of really good people out there that wants to see this happen. There's a tremendous number of young people out there in our school system that wants to see it happen, and they're going to succeed, whether it does or not, one or another. There's also a large number of kids that are not going to succeed, not going, not going to reach their potential, and that's, that's a shame. That's absolutely a shame. And I hope that doesn't happen more than it has to. One, one item, I'll just take a couple of minutes to, to give you my own personal perspective. And, and this is absolutely not to brag about anything out there for me, but give you an idea of how I've seen it work in, in my life. I grew up in Pickens, graduated from a high school with 11 kids in my class. Proudly say I was the top 9% of my class. I was fortunate to be there. But wherever I've gone, and, and I, when I was in school, my dad was a co-mother, had eighth grade education. My mother was the first person to graduate from high school, and her eight members of her, her seven siblings. They very much supported me going to school when people would ask, ask my dad, what are you going to be in co-mating? He gives, no, he's going to college, he's going to college. And, and I was able to do that. I was able to do that because of teachers in the system that helped me do applications. And, and I wanted to go to Western University, go from a class or a school of 130 kids to like 14,000 kids or something like that, that time. But I was able to do that. And, and as I look back, probably pretty naive, like nobody ever told me I couldn't do it. People in the community said, I can do it. We, no matter I had a lot of money, but I was able to do it, able to get by on a grant in college and a loan, and some student work study, got about $1,000 a year. Now that was a long time ago. It's not quite as expensive as it is now. Was able to do that, and I'm proud of where I came from. I'm proud of my mom and dad, proud of my teachers that helped me get where I'm at. I was able to graduate from Western University, go into accounting, was, was very fortunate, I think, you know, with, with all that help, with God's direction and, and guidance, to be able to, to spend 48 years in the accounting business. Became very much involved with oil and gas companies in Northeast, did a lot of presentations. I was, I was one of the few people in oil and gas in the county that thought taxes were a lot of fun and exciting. And so I got to speak on a lot of, a lot of areas, involved as head of the Pennsylvania and Western Oil and Gas Association Tax Committee, head of the Tax Committee for the, the National Oil and Gas Association. And all of those, I would put down on my resume, graduated WBU at Pickens High School. Proud of where I came from. I think there's a lot of pride, proud people in this community, proud of their kids wherever they're at. And, and just as, as I was able to get those, that encouragement, when my dad died at age 54 of cancer, I was a sophomore, or I was in my junior year in college. I decided, hey, I, I've worked on coal tipper, I've worked stacking lumber, I just come back and helped my, my mom and three sisters. And one of my aunts came to me and said, your dad wants you to go to college. And that's what I did. And I think we need to encourage our kids in some way out there, because I was in that 80%. I was in that 80% that I, I could have, could have, I could have made it, would have reached the potential I was there without that help. So what I would encourage us to think about, how many kids are out there like that that need that encouragement? That need a Starker center out there that, that whether it's does STEM-type training or career-type building in the trades, whatever it is, where they can be the best they can be with the potential they have. And I think that's why I don't, I'm really searching for, how do we do that? How, how do we do that? How to use the council, how do we do that with, with the assets we have, with the need we have, and, and make it happen? And the accountability, whoever you appoint as a group, I'd, I'd really like to see that be a working group that has to perform. And if they don't perform, you can call them, you can call them on that. And, but I appreciate your time. I, I really appreciate, I enjoy being in this community. I, I really do. I think we may not always agree on things, except whatever's best for our citizens, our community is what's important to us. So I appreciate your time, and hopefully you will move ahead and get this thing moving. So we have a facility, whether it's a new building or not a new building, but a facility reaches out to the needs of our youth, and we have more success stories we can brag about. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
I do want to just say a few things. One, I, I do not want there to be a misconception, we're not closing Starker period. I mean, Starker Youth Center is remaining an entity. As I, I don't want anybody to think that just because we're not moving forward with the multipurpose gymnasium, whatever you want to call it, new building next door to it, in the previous form, doesn't mean we're closing Starker. We're, we're not. Second thing is, is you're correct, Tom. I mean, we, we, when we had the Starker Board meeting last time, we did talk about what else could it be besides a gymnasium? One of the things that we had to do for the USDA was to formalize our cancellation. We, we could not pivot, we could not transition, we had to formalize the ending of one project before we could look at beginning a, a, a different project. So there's some formality there that the USDA needed to have. And so the Building Commission actually met last night to, to formalize the letter that is being sent to them through, that was helped by Steptoe and Johnson of just canceling that, that project. So one of the things that we have talked about, and, and I agree with you, I think all, all of us here agree with you, is, is that we, we have a mission at Starker to serve the community's youth, and, but in what, what capacity? You know, recreation is important, but, but, but not, not the primary objective of the center across the street. I know we have the basketball program, that's, that probably brings the most amount of, of participation through, that runs through Starker Youth Center. But we have, we have an, an education problem, not just here in, in Upsher County, not just in West Virginia, but nationwide. And, and I think we have a, we have a unique opportunity to pivot and to create an opport, to, to create a, to create a building that could be focused on science, technology, hands-on career possibilities. We, we're in the very early stages of, of talking with professionals like Shane White here up the street at Region Seven to explore the grant opportunities, because there really aren't any grant opportunities available for recreation. There are about that many, and, and they get doled out very quickly. But the amount of opportunities for learning, hands-on learning, particularly here in, in Appalachia, are, are much, much greater. So Shane and his team are, are helping us with that, you know, we are, that is, that is the cities, as well as all the cities and counties in the Region Seven footprint, that's our grant engine. And so they are, they are working on that. I actually just talked to Shane last week again about it. So we, we've, we've got opportunity to, to make something work across the street that doesn't financially tie the city down so much that we, for the next 40 years, if we were to have completed the project that was talked about and needed over there, with the cost of all of our other labor and all of our other projects going up, and, and keeping, keeping that project at $4 million, we would have, we would have struggled to, to pave streets, to, to put in streetlights, to put down new sidewalks, to give pay raises, to replace water lines. And those are primary functions of our, of our municipality. We started talking about $4 million before the, before inflation took over. And that $4 million project that we thought we could get this much of a facility for quickly became this much of a facility. And I, I think council agreed, and I think our community largely sees that if we're going to do something, we need to do it right. And, and just putting a building over there, just for the sake of putting a building over there, to say that we accomplished it, when it's all metal, it doesn't have the right gym floor because it's all we can afford, it doesn't have bleachers, it doesn't have storage, I don't know that we succeeded. I know we all wanted to succeed in, in, in to put something there that is full service, provides quality to the community, and I don't know that we were going to be able to do that under the current economic conditions. We also have a lot of uncertainty at the Capitol. This, this is a different legislature, it is a supermajority, and the municipalities at the state Capitol are not looked upon favorably. And so we are seeing, every session, we're seeing more and more and more opportunities to raise revenue at the municipal level, take it away. And so with, with a growing project over there, but a potentially decreasing line of, of revenue over here, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I like those odds. And I don't know that we like those odds either. We are not giving up on Starker. I don't want, again, I don't want anybody to think that we're giving up on Starker. We just need to find the way forward from an expansion standpoint and of how does it best fit the community's needs, just like you said, and, and how can we do this without, without cutting ourselves so deep that we can't accomplish any other projects? Because Upper West Lincoln Street was just paved, but I don't know what it's going to look like in 40 years. And if we can't pave anything, you know, between now and the next 40 years, I, I don't, our, our streets are going to be pretty, pretty bad shape. So I appreciate, I think we all appreciate you all, you and Dr. Rob coming this evening. I do want to touch on one last thing. Those funds that were fundraised, they are of the discretion and wishes and requests of the donors themselves. And we have made that clear. And, and so, and we, we have already cut a check back to the largest donor at their request. They, because we're not, we're not going forward with the project that they agreed to, they requested their $100,000 contribution in return. That's not to say that if we choose to go in a direction toward science, technology, what have you, that they would not be back on board for something. But by us just keeping their money, it's not going to them any good. They, they would be more than, but they would be mostly, most likely more, more than happy to be a part of, of a future project. Any, any of the donors that, that participated are more than welcome to request their, their, their money back. We've, we've made that clear. So it's not our money, it's, it's the community's money. And since we're not doing the project that they were attracted to, not to say that they may not be attracted to a future project, but if they wish to have their money back, that's, that's certainly possible. If they wish for us to keep it, and, and as we look forward to a new project possibly, that's, that's certainly fine. If they wish to help us with improvements made in the current building, that's certainly possible too. But it's up to each individual donor, because again, it is their money. So I just wanted to touch on those things.
Say a couple things.
Yeah.
I think along the, the line of what you, you mentioned about all the other needs that are out there, reminded me of when County Commission had control of fire. And Rob and I would go to meetings, and a couple of commissioners would come to meetings saying, you know, this is probably our last meeting, we're going to close you down, because regional jail costs are way too high, we can't afford that. And we're sitting there saying, you know, one of the reasons regional jail costs are high, because kids didn't have youth center, that they're getting in trouble at earlier ages, and that, that creates problems. And, and I know you have to, to meet those, to the kids that sit there saying, I'm in school now, and I'm not sure the quality of education I get because of COVID or whatever is what I need to get a good job, and, but then we're going to pave those streets out there. We're going to make, and I live on the streets, I like to not have potholes. But I think when you choose priorities, hopefully you'll, you'll choose a priority of kids, kids and families that have no other option out there than to have rest help out there. I know, that's, that's a hard decision that you folks are in, but I think that's one of the things that happens. When, when we send our kids to school, we gotta borrow the money. You sit there and say, well, we want them to maybe not have a good education, but I go and hawk until, I don't know about anyone else, but when my kids graduate from college and got a job, is when my finance, finances improve significantly. Because up to that point, we just paid a lot of money out for a lot of things. But I think that's us as a city, these are our kids, these are out there, we want to, as much as you can, and, and I realize you, you have to take care of the things that you have, but I'd like to encourage the council to go ahead and do that. And what you mentioned about giving the money back, Mayor, I think you do have that risk. I've had people come to me and say, I think we'll just take it back and give it to somebody else. I know there's been some options thrown out to people about, well, if you don't use that, we'll get it over here. I think if, if, if we don't have an option of what's going to happen with Starker, I don't know why you leave the money there. I don't know why people do that. Well, I think we have to come up with some, some idea. And one of the things I've, I failed to mention about a plan that I think needs to be involved in, where you go with Starker, it's not only with, with whether it's STEM center or trades or whatever it is, or facilities, but I think it's also, how do you manage a, a, a changing organization? It's not just a center for, for youth over here, that you, you, you take care of things as they roll in every day. I think it has to be a plan for, how do we manage that and fit that into, to the growing and changing needs and opportunities out there? So I think it's, it's a part of things of, if, if you, if you, if you need to think about whatever, but I, I would think if you don't move ahead and appoint something, or decide something, whether it's, it could be, you take two or three people of council and put them on a group. If you don't have something that comes back to the group, it's going to go down the list. I've, I've been involved with organizations all my career, and those who don't have a specific plan, they have good intentions that don't happen, even if you have plans. A lot of times those plans don't happen. If you don't have a specific guideline that reports back, don't kid yourself, it's not going to work. You might sit there and say, we tried, don't kid yourself, it's not going to work. And, and I think that's a shame for our community to disappoint our kids. And I, I'm hopeful you won't do that. So any, any, anything we can do to help, we're, we're not going away for this. I go to the Board of Education from the Education Foundation, and, and we've talked about all things going there, one statement I make every time I go is, we're not One statement I make every time I go is, we're not giving up on education, we're not. We're not giving up on a Stockard Center, Youth for, for Youth, we're not giving up on that. So if you decide not to do anything, expect to see me back, because this is important. And sometimes, sometimes you all need that nudge, not just me, sometimes we, not just you, I think we all need that nudge, it's so important. And I, I appreciate your time and effort on this, and I know everybody's trying to do the best you can, that's why you're where you're at. But this, this is important to these kids that are graduating every year and are challenged and may not have the folks like I had and you had to help them through this. But anyway, I, I appreciate your time, and I know it may seem like criticism, but I'm just, I'm just so committed to, to make this happen for the kids who are out there. I'll give you one example, something we had Career Day, a couple of years ago, third, fourth, and fifth graders. And the kid that I remember the best, the career, that competed in that, they had a Dac, you know, a, a race. They, they didn't have the best athletes, you had a sample from every school. There was one kid from one of the great schools that ran a, a race with boots on. He tried harder than anyone in that, that group of contestants. And they came in quite a bit behind everybody else, but he tried, and he was excited because everyone who was doing timing went over and congratulated him more than the person who won it. And I think that's, that's our community, that's what we do. So, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your folks' effort and time, and we're going to get this thing done somehow. Thanks.
Thanks, Don. All right. We are down to the financial report. Ambi?
Okay, I've got a report to give you. Probably ought to just make one comment here though, just being the finance person. Just so you know, council has always supported the Stockard Youth Center in budgets. I don't really know of a budget session they were ever really denied anything. Over the past years, they've started out with one full-time employee, they have now four, four full-time employees. They had no transportation, they now have three buses. They've purchased property, they have upgraded thousands and thousands of dollars in that building. So I don't want it to, I don't want to appear to council doesn't support.
I agree.
They absolutely have put lots of money in, that's from the finance side, I see what they did.
No, I agree, I agree.
So I just wanted to mention that, they, they, they do try.
No, I agree.
In your reports here, I have the balances for the enterprise funds for October. Waste collection, money market and checking, $1,900,000. And they have their CDs and savings at $318,000. And then they have that letter of credit for $64,000. Water board money market and checking, $1 million. Working capitals are at $907,000. Sanitary board money market and checking is $887,000, working capitals at $476,000. And then the stormwater fund is, is at $176,000. There's a few things coming up that will, will probably more than, well, it will be on your next agenda. The ARPA funds, we are going to have a little bit of money left over from that, about $106,000, as you, or most of you are aware of. The 2.3 million that we received have almost all gone well, has gone toward water and sewer projects. Just as a reminder, we have the water, Tenderton Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation, Tenderton Booster Station Building and Equipment, and the Water Treatment Plant Equipment. And then in the Sewer Department, we had engineering construction costs for Taylor Street, sanitary sewer, North Locust Street Sanitary Sewer, Sanitary Sewer. And then for stormwater engineering at Taylor Street. That $106,000 will have to be obligated by the end of this year. So definition of obligated is we either have to be under contract for something, or we have had, we have something that we need to have purchased through a purchase order and just waiting to extend the following year. We'll talk about that at the next meeting, there's some things that's come up, we have, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about a new water plant. Maybe the mayor had mentioned in one meeting, some of that could go towards the design with Bethesda. So we'll talk about that at the next meeting, you'll make a decision what to do with that The other thing, in January, I've been talking with Pete Saxton, he's our consultant with insurance, and you've probably read some of the changes that might be happening with PEIA. It will affect us, there'll be some rate increases. He's going, once they decide, none of these decisions have been finalized, so once those have been decided, he'll be here in January just to update council on why some of those changes are happening, and then how much it will affect us in our budget.
Do you know what those percentages are?
For, for the local governments, it's probably going to be about between 14 and 16%. There's going to be some changes with deductibles. Even when I'm just doing the rough math with what we have, I'm thinking around $120,000, $30,000 total, but that's all water sanitary waste. As far as the premiums, there are some deductibles that are changing, we'll talk about that too. But yeah, little, little bit changes. We aren't susceptible to the spousal surcharge, that was, that's a big question for employees. That's state employees that will be dealing with that. And the annual home rule report is due December 2nd, I just had it set up, that'll be included in the next council packet. That's just a review of what we've done with our home rule planks, and I'll have that submitted with the next council report. Councilman Rigger had worked on some job descriptions for the Human Resources and Information Technology Specialist, and I, I'll email those to you for any input, they did a really good job, and then those will be what you want to do. If you want to advertise for those, you want to go a different route, if you want to do a committee, but I'll have those emailed out to you. And then in your bills to be approved, there's a few there worth, oh, yeah, there's a few there worth noting, those are listed in your packet. You've committed $3,000 JCP Films, that was a gentleman that presented at the last council meeting. $1,400 to the Dickens Festival, $12,000 went to J.F. Allen for Blacktop for Ritchie Street, and the police impound lot, and the street department lot. $3,700 Argos USA for bulk cement, various street projects. $9,000 Benjamin Erisman for four weeks of mowing the city lots. He isn't mowing them now, that was prior. $42,000, that's to finish off what we owed Step Two at Tone Johnson on that Stockard project. That was for the first phase of banner financing, we wouldn't have gone through this again. Then Southwest to Hissell, Hissells. That's the financial report. I don't have a resolution, you can mark that off your list, I'll have that ready at the next meeting.
Okay. Let's pause real quick, is there, is there an approval to pay our bills that Ambi just went over with us? Motion by Scott, is there a second? Second by Pam, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, opposed. Motion carries. Down to the approval of the consolidated, or to consolidate, I want to say Consolidated Works Board, to consolidate two Stockard Youth Capital Campaign Accounts.
Yeah, we had two capital campaign accounts, one was, one was savings account, and one was the money market. The mayor alluded to a request for a refund, so it's going to be cleaner just to consolidate them into one account. We didn't actually even have any checking, checks for these accounts because we just put money in, we didn't draw any money out. So it's going to be easier to manage that if there's any more requests, and I do need to write a check out once we consolidate those. Makes it cleaner, we have one less account too.
Is there a motion to approve that request and recommendation from Ambi?
No move.
Motion by Randy, second by Dave Thomas, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is our Public Works Director. Good evening, Ethan.
Good evening.
Hello, Ethan.
For the department in general, excuse me, we received the invoice for the taping of Cleveland Avenue, East Main Street, Franklin Street, and it was significantly less than we estimated, for a total of $179,068.72. That was about a third of the original estimate. We had some widths that varied, so much better news than being over, but we'll have that additional money allocated to paving to do in the spring, and we'll bring that list whenever paving season begins then. And we discussed the job on Park Stage at the previous council meeting. Mr. Sanders got some clarification from, he's going to be part of the insurance carrier, and we have decided we can do a removable railing for the three-foot stage, so we have materials ordered for that and are planning on starting that project in December. The street department has spent a majority of the time decorating for Christmas.
Job bonus complete, I believe. East Main Street is complete as of today, and have been, they spent some time working on the cemetery for Veterans Day, with the bulk of their last couple of weeks. The Waste Department, we met with Core Heart regarding some alternative waste uses, they have requested a waste meeting in the future to discuss some of the options with that, but have not set a date yet. And one of the new garbage trucks arrived, and we also received a report from the DEP, we're working to get some permit issues cleaned up at the transfer station. Sewer Department, they're continuing to work on clarifier and a couple of aerators and the oxidation ditches, and are looking to begin work on the CMH development on Vicksburg this month, waiting for a few more materials to begin on it, and a small upgrade project along Chestnut Street. Water Department completed Island Avenue, are moving to Central Avenue for another water upgrade in the next month or so, and they have also been working on some water point layouts and options. And for engineering, the Tenderton Booster Station, the contractor, B Punch List, continues with the work, we're anticipating finishing the list within the next two weeks. Grant number two, this Kerry Finch installation is scheduled for sometime this week or next. Stockard Youth and Community Center, that's contract order, the materials, and are prepared for construction for the gym floor in mid-December 2024 to upgrade that surface. And the DOH Morton Avenue Project, they received the notification from the DOH to begin with the design phase of that project, and as mentioned, the CMH development project is getting ready to get started, and I believe that's all I have.
Do you have any idea of the check the timeline for getting that new floor down over at Stockard Youth Center?
I believe it's about a month, I would have to, it's not a really long project, but I would have to check the contract documents for sure.
That's not the contract that was going down.
Yes, that's not.
That's what I was.
Anything else for Ethan? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Up next is our City Porterculturalist, Dixie Green.
Good evening, everybody.
Another successful flower season?
Yeah, I think it's safe to say it's done. Yeah, we wrapped up our growing season and donated all of our sweet potatoes, as we do every year at the parish house. About two weeks ago, we finished tree trimming in city parks and city rightaways, and I believe Tuesday was when we finished redoing the landscaping at that bed by the wall above McDonald's along Route 20. We've been wanting to do that all summer, we never had a chance because of the drought, we finally got to it. Just making it more low maintenance, since we moved that display over to the Stockard Youth Center fence next to their basketball court, we got a lot of compliments on that this year, with it being right next to the festivals and the parade routes and everything. And right now, we're just helping with Christmas decorating, and in the next few weeks, I'll be prepping the greenhouse and ordering materials and supplies for our next growing season.
Yesterday, Dixie was up on one of the trees on Main Street, and how nice was it to decorate for Christmas when it was 70 degrees?
It was this morning.
Yeah.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you. How many sweet potatoes did we harvest?
I honestly don't know, we did not weigh them this year. A truckload.
Truckload?
Which truck?
My truck.
Excellent job once again, I mean, those flowers were just spectacular.
Thank you.
Well maintained.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I was glad to see some fall ones out there.
Yes, yes. I couldn't, I couldn't manage every basket, Pam, but I did, I did try to get a couple of them up there.
And you know when you put moms in her control, they're not going to die. Everybody else kills moms, but, but...
I don't know about all that.
Actually, you work for the Fredbrook Garden Club, much?
Occasionally, we help out with some of their projects, and if they ever need help over in their park, we, we're happy to help with that.
How about with Westland, what they're doing on their campus?
Yes, so we are, I have been over there, I cord their campus, and they've asked me to come up with a few designs for a few of their beds, I'm currently working on that. And I was talking with Ethan, he was going to take it to consolidate it as whether or not we, we were going to be able to work with them on that, or if they're going to contract that, that labor out. But yeah, we're, we're working with them on that.
I think it's really important for college to have a beautiful campus with shrubs and flowers and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work as always. Okay, City Police Department. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Hello, Chief. Hello.
In addition to Chief's report this evening, we have notice that Police Civil Service Commission is accepting applications, as you saw today on social media, and then also from, from maybe a month or so ago, where it was first presented, we're asking, Chief's asking for approval of the City Police and West Street Westland College MOU. So Chief, take it away.
Sure. Just a few things to update council on tonight, as you mentioned, the Police Department is currently taking applications, with the deadline being January 3rd, 2025. We did have set a tentative dates for the, both the physical ability test, as well as the written test for Saturday, February 8th. The physical ability test will take place at the Event Center with the winter conditions. We did swear in our newest officer, Chris Spottlow, this Monday, and he immediately began training, went through orientation training. Did receive notice just last week that he has been accepted into the West Virginia State Police Academy with his training to begin on January 13th. The anticipated graduation date for his class will be May 2nd, 2025. He will have a quick turnaround, so we're, again, putting him through orientation training. They're going to shift him down to night shifts and place him with his first field training officer, which will be James Fisher, to begin the Phase One of his field training ahead of the academy for a period of four weeks leading into January. So when he graduates in May, he'll have eight more weeks of field training to complete. We are, and I've reported on this a number of times over the last several months, but we do continue to train various officers for specific areas of expertise, mainly focus on training the trainer sessions on a variety of different topics that we need within the Police Department. Just recently, we had two officers undergo such training, Officers Warner and Wade Mountain, completed instructor development training with the FBI, and along with that, just last week, completed TASER instructor training as well. I'm in the process of submitting their applications for these respective areas of expertise with Mepsus, the Training Authority in Charleston, for them to be certified instructors for our department. Their respective areas of expertise will be less lethal, munitions, TASER instructor, and defensive tactics. So a very, a large area of what we need within the Police Department, and again, we're able to keep that in-house. I did return from the most recent Kalia Conference, and I learned that there are a number of changes that are coming with the standards manuals, many of which will require... changes that are coming with the standards manuals, many of which will require extensive policy research and updating a variety of different reports on top of what we already have with Kalia will be required. So we, in addition to rounding out year four of our reaccreditation cycle, as I mentioned earlier, it's a short turnaround with our web assessment to occur in February. And just a short time after that, in March, are onsite. So along with this will be this research policy, this policy research and development, which will occur with that as well, with an anticipated presentation to the Policy Committee in April, as we begin our new cycle. And Mayor, that's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Any questions for Chief Gregory? Don't think so. You want to talk about the, what's kind of like old business, but the M O U?
Sure. The, this is the M O U that was presented, I believe, a couple of months ago, that was brought forth to us from West Virginia Westland College. This is a document that we've worked on for a number of months through the spring and summer. I do know that this is, having this M O U in place is one of the requirements that Westland has with the Department of Education. And so we've kicked the document back and forth and collaborated to its present version that we presented to council tonight. I do know there was some question when we initially had presented it, which led to its tabling. But I do know that there's been some further inquiry from Westland as to its status, and so that's just what, that's what brings it back to the table tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be the first to say, you know, I've read through this thoroughly. I think it's something that I would absolutely support. It continues to build a unified front with West Virginia Westland. I look at their students as citizens of our community during the months that they're here. They do have a security team over there. I think that by utilizing this M O U, it'll help bring even more professionalism to the campus by utilizing some of the training efforts we can do. It'll help our department, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, by having a very clear line of cooperation with their security team over there, led by John Bowman. And in any instance where a county law enforcement has to go onto the campus, has to deal with the situation, but also recognizes, you know, the parameters that are in place with a higher, an institution of higher education. I think it's a win-win for everyone concerned. So I will give my full support.
Now, again, one, I'd like to know what the higher ed policy is referenced. And there's some practical aspects to this. And the one that stands out, when I first read the M O U, and I'm going to go back to it again, Section Four, Part D, and B P D responds to incidents on campus. It is understood that security officers will be present for questioning da-da-da-da-da. Should that not read, "When appropriate"?
See, I have a problem with that.
I have a problem with it. Because I think there are situations where law enforcement, whether it's the city police or the sheriff and state police, go to Westland, that it may not be appropriate for anyone other than the officers and the students representative to be present. I don't think it needs to be understood. Now, if it says "when appropriate," that is a change I could find acceptable on that line. And then in Section Nine, Medical, I have the wrong glasses, Medical Amnesty, the B P D issues and underage consumption citation. Okay, kid goes to a basic class, as it's called, and if he completes the program, his record is expunged. Do we have such programs for our citizens here in Buchanan?
Yeah, yes, sir.
For underage youth? You know, I mean...
Yeah, the basic program is a program that Buchanan Police Department has had for many years. It's a diversion program that was actually established by Keith Rowan probably 20 years ago. And the intent of the program was to work with primarily the courts. And instead of approaching underage drinking issues with just strictly jail, jail time or fines, to have a diversionary component to it that extends, there's still consequences. The consequences are, take more of an educational approach as well. So that's something that the department has facilitated and is open to anybody that has had those charges over the course of those many years, as they coordinate that with the court itself.
Is that still being done?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we still, so that, just to clarify, Mr. Rigger's concerned, they're treated the same as our, the citizens of Buchanan. There's no difference.
Now, another issue that comes to my mind, and I don't say, I'm typically, I know there's collaboration between Westland, City Hall, and the police department. Response to reported sexual assault, interpersonal relationship violence, and stalking. Buchanan Police Department agrees to comply with West Virginia Westland Colleges' policies on sexual and domestic, sexual and domestic misconduct regarding anonymous confidential reporting, including acknowledging when, how, and what information can or must be, you know, I mean, as I read that, are you losing your autonomy?
No, I don't, that's not the way I read it. Yeah, and again, these were, in large part, a lot of the discussions that we had back and forth in terms of what the rules are. And the current version that we arrived at is really just a formalization, to my understanding, a formalization of the long-term relationship that we've always had, at least in my experience of being with the city for a number of years. We've always had a working relationship with them where we collaborate on incidents, both emergency and passive, as well as investigatory in nature. So, you know, and again, through, historically speaking, there is an understanding, or has been an understanding, that, that, you know, as far as our autonomy goes, there are situations that are sensitive in nature, and that, you know, we're not free to just open up the case file and share willy-nelly with them, that there's rules that we have to follow, rules of procedure through the court. And that's, has been and will be followed, and that's understood. And that was part of the conversation through the development of this document.
Can I just ask, then, as the chief law enforcement officer for the city of Buchanan, as a person who has studied these situations, who deal with it in a real life basis, on a daily basis, are you comfortable with this M O U?
Yeah, I am. Again, this is something that I had a voice in the process. You know, it took many forms until it got to its current version. And, you know, I mean, there was some explanation as far as the formalized collaboration, as it's spelled out in the document. And I understood Westland's point of view in terms of making sure that their students are protected, making sure that they, certainly, and there's a provision in there where students have access to resources, particularly students who are victims of crime. So I certainly understand that point of view. And again, likewise, and at least what was communicated to me, they understand my point of view in terms of the roles and responsibilities that the police officers play when we're called upon to investigate criminal activity or assist in emergency capacities.
So you don't feel that in any way, I want to quote Jim Justice, in any way, shape, form, fashion, your hands are not tied at all?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Our officers can fulfill their obligations and responsibilities with no hindrance.
Yes, I believe so.
Mr. O'Neil, have you, have you repeated?
You have, right? I have, oh, yes, I have. And, I mean, to, Mr. Rigger, to your point, the city police does not have the legal ability to truncate its authority in the case of a criminal investigation. So if there was a situation where there was crime committed on campus, and the police needed to conduct its investigation in a way that it needs to, this M O U, for two reasons. One, because there's sufficient language in there to provide for circumstantial application of the agreement. But two, just as a matter of the, I mean, just equal protect, I mean, the city cannot waive its ability to conduct criminal investigations, even on a campus. So I have no, I have no concerns that this ties the hands of the police department in the conduct of its criminal investigative responsibilities.
There'll be an opportunity for discussion after I do this, but, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the M O U.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I haven't read it on my phone.
A second, Mr. ...
There's a second. Now, now we'll keep discussion.
Mayor, if I could just chime in as well, just to, just to kind of take off on what Attorney Nils just stated, our authority is derived from state code, the West Virginia and the U.S. Constitution, and case law. So obviously, that is the precedent in terms of any action that we would take as a result of our authority. And Mr. Nils is right, this M O U would not override that. Our authority is derived strictly from those sources and over offices in the main zone.
Who all was a part of putting this together?
I worked directly with John Bowman. Now, I know there was a committee on the, on Westland's end that was made up of some of their Title IX folks, I believe. I'm not sure who else was involved. I know there was a number of different people, a couple of different departments involved. And I know that third-hand through what Mr. Bowman has communicated to me, through our conversations and developing the document.
How involved was James?
I don't know. Two, again, I just work directly with Mr. Bowman.
Why am I not? How about, how about the sheriff?
No, Sheriff's Department was not. This M O U is strictly between the city police department and Westland.
I have a question. If there is an assault on the campus, the student comes straight to you instead of reporting it at the college, how is that handled?
Just like it always has been, we investigate, we take their complaint, we investigate their criminal activity. You know, I mean, there's kind of a lot of situations we do need to collaborate with Westland to get, to further develop that investigation because we need information. And so, you know, I don't see any of that changing. And again, that's taken from just historically what we've done, plus the continued conversations that I've had with John as we've developed this.
So he's the main person they go to with something that?
Yes, he is the director of security.
Is this happening at either college in Most of Valles?
To my understanding, it is. In fact, the, Mr. Bowman had communicated to me that a lot of the language in this M O U was taken from other institutions. So he didn't necessarily read that well.
One question worth asking, maybe Mr. O'Neil can answer this, too. This has Chief Gregory's signature line on it instead of Mayor Skinner's. Is there a reason for that, or is it nuanced?
I would suggest that we would add two signature places on it. John Bowman would be, since he was a big part of it, and then the president, and then myself, in addition to Chief, on there, too.
I think that would be fine. I, I don't have any objection to that. I don't have objection to the way it's drafted. I don't have any objection to that alteration. I'll make that part of the motion.
Tom here is supportive of it. Is he?
Well, not opposed to it. I mean, I, you know, I understand that Westland has obligations to the United States Department of Education under Title IX, and this is a part of helping them stay in compliance with their federal regulations. This is not, this is not a new thing. This is not, this is not the first time this has ever been done. But, so I, I have no, I have no objection to it.
So this is a federal requirement?
Well, it's a federal requirement for the, for the college, not for, I'm sorry, not the city.
I thought it was higher ed, West Virginia.
No, the United States Department of Education.
Well, that's what we done away with.
I would also admit my motion to include adding those two signature lines. And if Mr. Zuliani agrees, second.
I would say with Mr. Nils and Chief Gregory's reassurances, I can, I can support it.
Me, too. I haven't read it.
I might abstain, I guess, if you didn't read it.
Well, that's why I'm ready to do it. Probably should.
I have no objection to it. It seems like it is a long time coming, just putting what's been happening in the past into form.
So there's a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion you'd have on this line item? Hearing the need for none, I would call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed.
I'm abstaining.
Let the minutes reflect that the ayes have it, with one extension being Mrs. Butler. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chief Gregory?
Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, I volunteer Randy for taser training.
Should we eat a target?
I'll get the day to you.
I can bob and weave like that. I can bob and weave.
How far can you bob and weave?
We'll find out.
Probably what me to do is a taser, right?
Yeah. All right. Mr. O'Neil signaled to me that he doesn't really have a report, but he could give us a brief update on a couple of things if he wants to.
I don't need further tonight. I would just say that I've been working with Potesta about getting them information. I'm hoping that next week, next meeting, we will be able to have our surveys back for the rest of the year. But, you know, I'll believe it when it happens.
Thanks, sir.
Is there anything we can do to light a fire under Potesta?
No, Potesta, no, Potesta, they are, they are working, no, they're, they're doing quite well.
All right, down to new business. We have three items left. They should go pretty quickly. I'd like to ask that you approve the building and wiring permits that you were shown earlier today. Is there a motion to approve those? Motion by Randy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Like sign opposed. Let the minutes reflect that the motion carries with the abstention of Mr. Rigger. All right, down to B and C. As promised from the agenda last time, we need to appoint our dear friend Scott Randall to a few things. Lucky him. He did attend our water board meeting last week, but it was for information only for him. So at the next water board meeting, hopefully, he'll be allowed to vote with your approval. So would you please approve appointing Scott Randall to the city's water board?
So, second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Rigger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Congratulations. Now, we need to appoint him to a couple of other things. I'd like to appoint him to the Kalia and the C F A I, it's not, it's not as fun to say, which are the Police and Fire Policy Review Committees. Motion by Randall, second by, sorry, by Rigger, second by Randall Sanders. Too many Rs and Randalls up here. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. There is an executive session on here this evening. I'm proposing that we cancel that. There's nothing really earth-shattering, and given the weather conditions outside, let's just all go home. So down to council comments and announcements. We'll begin over here with Mr. Randall.
I'm good this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Butler?
I want to thank Rob Rapp and Don Nestor coming on behalf of Stocker Heathen Center. And I agree with you 100%. First of all, we've got to take care of the education of the kids in this county first and foremost. And as long as we are in the process of doing something over there, I believe we should try to do our best to try to get some kind of training center or anything over there. And we're going to do it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Rigger?
I do like this new format for the agenda. Thank you. Easily followed, and it's organized. I like that. And Dr. Rapp and Mr. Nestor, thank you for your presentation. And I think everyone up here is supportive of the youth. And in addition to STEM, look at STEAM. That seems, I think, it would be the more current trend, adding art. seems, I think it would be the more current trend, adding art to the sciences and technology and engineering and math, so. If you're searching for grants, that may be an aid. Other than that, Dixie, once again, great job. Great job. Jody, looking forward to the barbecue bash. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Down the table to Mr. Thomas.
The, welcome aboard Scott again, and the new appointments. And I appreciate Mr. Nestor, Dr. Rupp, and what they presented to us earlier. I have concerns, not with just Stocker, but I think that one of the concerns I have is the last couple of years, we were given presentations from different organizations about some of the challenges we have in our culture and our society, and I remember a number of years ago, we had a comment made by, I think Dr. Reed was at that meeting, that 35% of the babies being born in Harrison County already had some kind of substance abuse. And then we had, in the last, within the last year, we had counselors from the high school and middle schools say that 43% of the kids in our high school and middle school and so forth didn't live with either one of their biological parents. And then two weeks ago, when we were interviewing people to fill a vacancy on the city council, we had an individual that had a doctorate degree in nursing say that 50% of the kids at academy didn't live with either one of their biological parents. So we do have a crisis in our society and culture, and I think what Mr. Nestor and Dr. Rupp talked about with Stocker is critically important. I don't have any answers for what we need to do long-term, but the mayor did say at one meeting recently that he was going to consider appointing some type of a task force or committee or board to identify what we need to do for our community, and I would hope the county commission would get involved in that, too. And I would hope that a lot of the organizations in our community, whether it's the hospitals or the large corporations like Weyerhauser or Walmart, Lowe's, we got a crisis in our society today. This is just not our community, but it's pervasive throughout the country, and Appalachia's one of those areas that we have problems. Substance abuse, and some things happen to parenting, and I don't have any answers to it, obviously, and, but it's something that I think we need to address as a community, and I think even the Development Authority, if we can show companies outside that we have a phenomenal community here, recognizing that parenting is important, education is important, we'd be phenomenally a great place to live. And that's my ultimate goal, is to make sure people are well taken care of in our community with good parents, good education system, is something, you know, we need to take a serious look at. That's all I have to say. Everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I'll be out of town for four or five days, and probably have 11 grandkids say, "Look at this, Gramps." I say, "You don't get it all the time, do you, guys?" So, God bless you all.
We'll be sure to pull the drawbridge up, Mike.
I figured that, I figured that. I didn't punch it for you, I'm just...
No, you did good tonight, David. Rob?
I'll try to be a little lighter. I do appreciate both of you guys and what you had to say, and I just want to echo what the mayor said, that a lot of, again, false information out there, that it's not a death knoll for Stocker Youth Center, this is just a shift in position of where it was directed, and it's, and it's really not a feasible option to do that, and it can be, can be hike and look at different options, and that's what we'll try to do. I just want to thank Dixie, too. I just, I travel all over the state for my business, and I know whenever I mention that I'm from Upshire County, the first thing people say, you know, event-wise, is in the more months how beautiful the flowers are, and how beautiful the Main Street is, and then coming home late from a WVU game last night, just the Christmas decorations being put up, I just wanted to thank the city workers and everyone doing that, because it's a calming effect when you come in late at night, and I remember when Cameron and Carter were growing up, they always looked forward and anticipated driving up and down Main Street in the dark, once the lights came up, and it's just great to be home, and you're driving up, up and down 79, and it's dark, and 33 is pitch black, and then you come into Main Street, it's like a little beacon of, of hope, and it, your heart skips a little bit, and it's good to be, you know, home on Main Street. Thank you to everyone that's part of that, and I know it's not an easy thing to do, it's a lot of work.
Thanks, Rob. Mr. Sanders?
Okay, so, again, you know, Rob and Don, thanks for being here tonight. I want to echo what, what Mr. Zuliani said. Sometimes there is misconceptions, you know, we're not closing down Stocker, which has been said many, many times. We are, we have to pivot, we had to make a decision based on fiduciaries, being a fiduciary of this city, being fiscally responsible, and so on. I don't think either one of you would want us to have built that building and have it foreclosed on in two years, or have it unoccupied because we couldn't afford to staff it, or have it empty with no bleachers. I think it would have been, you know, just absurd to have done that. So I just ask you to trust us in our decisions as we move forward. There are great proponents of Stocker Youth and Community Center up here, maybe not as great as the two of you, I won't try to compete with that, but I hope you don't look upon us as people trying to destroy something, we're not. We absolutely, absolutely want that program to succeed, and have every intention to doing so. I agree also, Dixie, great job, city crews on all the projects that's been going on. It's looking great for the season. Chief, congratulations, the department, I know, has its challenges with finding a couple more employees and so forth, I know that you'll persevere, and doors are opening good. We have a new young officer heading to academy, that's great. At the event center this weekend will be the Holly Jolly Arts and Craft Show, they're setting up tomorrow, so hopefully the weather will cooperate. It's always a packed, packed house at the event center for that arts and craft show, so if you, if you can, come out Saturday and participate, get your Christmas shopping done, and enjoy the event center, too.
What kinds of...
We have a few holiday, we have a few holiday events coming up, for private parties and so forth, Rotary's having their Christmas party there, a couple of the other businesses in town are having their Christmas parties there, so we're looking forward to that, and I believe it's from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. is the arts and craft show, I think, so looking forward to a good weekend. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, if you want to, just, just been thinking about this, since we, we've kind of included events in here, if you want to include some of those things that are, since we're really heavily involved in the convention center, if we want to put those on that list, we can do that right at the beginning, and...
Okay, good.
That makes sense.
Yes, sometimes people leave, if we have guests here, they don't always hear the end of the meeting, so, thank you. And thank you for stepping up again to do the convention center work.
Okay.
So, I don't have anything further than what everybody else has said. Appreciate Dr. Rupp and Don for coming this evening. I thought, I thought about those parties and elections classes of the past month, thought to myself as I was watching Tuesday evening, man, if I was back in Dr. Rupp's class, I'd have had this thing, we'd have had it down to the, to the every last electoral vote as to what was going to happen, because we did. The '08 presidential election, he had us, he would email us at 1 o'clock in the...
Forty-nine out of 50 states.
That's right. He would email us at 1:00 in the morning, updates, things happening, and we were supposed to catch it and have it ready by class the next day. Professor, so, anyway, 8:31, I entertain a motion that we adjourn. Happy Thanksgiving.